Hey, good evening. Welcome to our interview tonight with Matias Kush, county candidate for county council district two. First, a little bit about Houli Pack. Houli Pack was birthed from a shared drive to rework our system by seeking Ina-based equity-focused leadership for our Hawaii Island community. Now more than ever, we need leaders who are willing to circle back to our roots and instill real change in our community. From Kona to Ka'au to Hilo to Havi, the time is now to Houli the System. Conducting our interviews tonight are Christine Kubat and Tanya.
Yamalaka.
Starting with the question tonight will be Christine. Go ahead, Christine.
Aloha. First question relates to the functions of government. As you know, there are several branches of our county government. And so which of these branches should be most directly involved in setting policy?
In setting policy? Well, there's the executive branch and the legislative branch and it just like in state and federal and a judicial branch. Although in county, it's called different terms and the county council is the legislative would be the equivalent of the legislative branch. And I know there's lots of calls to decentralize power out of the executive branch because the executive branch controls the hiring of most of the department heads with a few notable exceptions. And thus can really drive policy through department heads as they interpret and actualize legislation that the council body creates. And so to answer your question, I think there needs to be a shift because whenever there's too much power in one position, things can be skewed and you take more of that public input out of the equation. And it's easier for any one individual or organization to have an outside influence when there's just a single person. So I know that's something that's talked about already right now, and I'd like to see further development in that arena to balance out the power. I for one, I love the idea of like a managing director that takes away a lot of the cycles we see in county government where the mayor hires a department head and they may or may not continue after their tenure. You know, whether it's four or eight years, and that creates these cycles. They're kind of on the short term, and I think that's one of the reasons our infrastructure issues are what they are right now. A little on the dire side.
So just to be clear, you're saying the executive branch is most directly involved in setting policy?
I would say it has an outsized role. I yes, I would say the executive branch through its ability to take, you know, the county or the council can pass a law and via the mayor and his department heads, in this case his, but the mayor as an entity, the executive branch through the department heads have a lot of latitude. And a lot of what we see and the frustrations we often run into are those department heads, they may mean well, but it's the the organization below them and how that law is carried out. Does that make sense to you?
It makes sense. I just wanted to make sure that my question was clear. So what I asked is which branch of county government should be most directly involved in setting policy?
The council.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Matias, foregoing the processes currently in place to prevent damage to the natural environment, historic properties and burial sites as a way to decrease development costs and make housing more affordable is an idea promoted by developers and the construction industry. Do you support this regulatory shift? And if so, why?
Gosh, Tanya, you're kind of echoey. Can you start the beginning again?
I can. Forgoing the processes currently in place to prevent damage to the natural environment, historic properties and burial sites as a way to decrease development costs and make housing more affordable is an idea promoted by developers and the construction industry. Do you support this regulatory shift? And if so, why?
No, you know, a lot has been made about in the media about Hawaii and Hawaii County having some of the greatest regulatory burdens on construction. And you know, that's kind of my background. I've been doing what used to be called starter homes, but now we call them affordable homes. And I've been doing that a long time. And I think the regulatory, when it comes to the environmental and cultural aspects are really important, and they're really important to the people. We have a limited shoreline and it, you know, we already know the impacts of overdevelopment along shorelines. And history, once it's erased, once those cultural assets are gone, they're gone. It's just not the same to have a plaque here stood this hail. And so that's really important. I do, on that same vein, support some of the oversteps in our building code. And I'd like to see maybe some increases in density. I'm not a fan of the current urban sprawl. I know that the new general plan is coming out soon. And I think it's going to start to address that to make ADUs or what we call ohanas here on Hawaii Island a little easier to make to have multi-generational families and people who buy these homes nowadays, which are pretty, pretty expensive, allow them to maybe have a rental income and so solve a couple of problems there at once. So I am in favor of relaxation of some of the building regulatory, but not the environmental or cultural codes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
What are affordable housing credits and how do you see them being used or possibly abused by developers?
Well, that's a big thing. It's been the news. And to be honest with you, I do not know, affordable housing credits are pretty complex and I don't know all the nuances and clearly with the current investigation and charges levied against a former housing and community development director, they are complex enough that there is a lack of understanding throughout the departments and, and you know, they had a pretty elaborate scheme. So I won't pretend to know all of that. I don't think that that system is a fair one because it allows for selling credits and creates like these pockets of wealth and maybe lower social economic neighborhoods and areas. And I'm a big fan, you know, of creating I'm a Yimby, not a NIMBY. And I know that's popular. Everybody wants to be a Yimby. Yes, I want to help and I want to be part of it. But when it comes to the actuality, you know, you see it in the news all the time. People don't want it next door. And what they mean is they don't want multifamily or medium density housing near them, even if they live in the center of town. I know this is a topic in Kailua Kona right now. That's pretty hot. You know, two subdivisions that I watched get built from late 90s and early 2000s are now arguing about some holocaust in between them that is scheduled for medium density housing. So I think there's got to be a better system out there. I don't know what that is right now, but that's certainly something I want to approach because it's really important. And it's probably tied into impact fees. There's, there's all kinds of different models and I don't think we have time to go into them. Because that's a pretty deep subject matter, but I don't agree with the current developer credits for affordable housing.
Next question, should the prior ban on single-use plastic containers in restaurants and plastic shopping bags be reinstated?
You said the prior ban?
Yes, so the prior ban on single-use plastic containers in restaurants and plastic shopping bags be reinstated?
Wait. I thought that ban was still in effect. I haven't even heard this.
Well, they allowed during COVID, they allowed the use of plastics, single-use plastics.
Wow. Well, I'm glad that not too many people, you know, jumped back into that. I wasn't even aware of that. But I don't support that. No, that's, that I know is a cost item and it's been one for the restaurant industry that's really suffered during COVID and but our Department of Environmental Management and our waste stream right now is in dire straits and we need to make compromises where they're reasonable to do so. And maybe that's a topic that we'll get into further on this. But I really support the use of paper and the compostable items that they do use at some of these takeout stations at restaurants. And like I said, that's news to me. I don't ever even remember reading that in the newspaper.
Well, then just as a quick follow-up, what can you or will you do if elected to develop our island's capacity for processing compostable substitutes to the single-use plastics? You said you support that. So is there, do you have ideas on what you could actually do and implement?
Yeah, so right now, one of the big waste streams that we have in in our garbage is compost, right? And so some of the ideas that are being kicked around, and again, elected to council does not make you the king of all ideas. It makes you one of nine to negotiate and discuss these things. But I know some of the ideas that are being talked about and worked on right now are the getting compost out of the waste stream. And it's a big component. It's a methane producer and according to the director of DEM, it's, it's a contributing factor to landfill, you know, hastening of its fill and then it creates issues in the landfill process. And I know that the current green waste processor does not allow compost, but they are working, the current council members, I understand, are working on a plan to update that contract, which goes through like 2028 or something, kind of a while or 2027. And that would be something to pursue. That also goes hand in hand with the idea in our tighter density neighborhoods like Waimea, Kailua Kona, Waikoloa, Hilo, perhaps select density neighborhoods in Pohoa where we start garbage service and then can use, have a compostable green waste can. A cheaper, shorter alternative, I don't know if you folks remember, but I think it was during Billy Kinois first was a grant they got for giving out those compost bins. They're like 30 inches by 30 inches by maybe three feet tall. And we use them and we have a significantly lower waste stream because we compost all that wet goods into that. And it's, it's a great way. And I'm, I don't know the numbers, but I would guess that in bulk, those recycled material containers will be cost effective if they were widespread and adopted through some kind of incentive program. Yeah, I'm sorry. I just keep going on that forever.
Earth machines. They're called earth machines.
Oh, is that what they are? Yeah. Yeah, they're great.
And do you agree with Mayor Roth's decision to suspend Community Development Plan Action Committee activities?
Yeah, that's, you know, that's a good question. I read about that in the paper and there was really a never a good development in that article, why that was done. I know that part of it was staffing and getting the community development, what is it called? CDP, community? No, what are they? Hamakua Community Development Plan? Yeah. And there was also a lot of vacancies. So it didn't really develop why that was. And I think they are a good thing. I will say with one caveat that I know areas like in the Puna, CDP was criticized in the past, and this is quite a while ago. But when they had it was active before, a lot of people felt like it was hijacked by retirees. And they did not want any business growth or anything. And Puna, they wanted it as a bedroom community because they wanted that. They didn't have a need. They didn't care about commuting in the morning or afternoon. And so that's, that's one criticism against those community development plans. But overall, I'm, I'm a big advocate for community input and stakeholder input and really trying to get a diverse view. So yeah, really have a good fix on what's, what the issue is and, and what are, what are the guardrails surrounding an issue really? It gives you an operating platform to figure out what's the best path forward to, to serve the citizens.
Did you have any follow-up questions, Christine, or anything?
I'm sure you kept going right then, huh?
Okay, I'm, I'm just gonna be transparent and forthright. I'm realizing in this list of questions. Yes. I'm good.
Matias, your slogan is progress together. How do you define progress?
How do I define progress? You know, maybe you guys know my, kind of my signature volunteer project for the last 12 years has been Hilo Bay Front Trails. And these are these multi-use trails down in the bayfront area. And my friend Peter Kabota, who's now a judge, but before that he was an attorney. And, and we, together with a group of really solid and great volunteers, kind of resurrected that plan and started writing grants. And I've been really involved with that. And one of the things that I'm most proud of on that is breaking down these silos between federal, state and county groups. And you know what? Repeat the rest of that question?
How do you define progress?
So that breaking down a silos, because how that works with federal grants are very prescriptive. And Christine, we were talking about this a little bit before we went live. But they're very prescriptive. They give you a million dollars, but you have got to make sure, you know, like we talked about there, cultural, environmental. We even had to go through a bunch of marine National Marine Fisheries hurdles for like the last trail, which is, you know, five lanes away and a couple soccer fields from the ocean. And those things, when, when I sign a piece of paper and give it to Jeff, he has 30 days. And then he's got to give it to Christine and she might have 30 or 60 or 180 days before it gets to Tanya, before it comes back to me. And these things, Hawaii is pretty famous for being one of the worst states and Hawaii County being one of the worst counties in Hawaii for getting federal dollars in those grants. And through that Hilo Bay process, we have developed like who the key players are and bring them in on Zoom meetings or in-person meetings and get these people together. And we get those 30-day letters sometimes signed during the meeting. And it's like boom, boom, boom. And that's progress. It's not perfection. It's progress. You know, if you notice Hilo Bay trails, it didn't go anywhere initially. And now we got a little segment. It's going a little more. And we're, we're getting ready to go out to bid for the next section, which will create some more loops. And that's progress. It's not perfection. People get stuck on perfection. They find ways to say no because it's so, there's, there's so many problems. You guys know this and they're so complex. The key is lots of, where's my camera? Lots of little bites around the corners and slowly that problem shrinks by attrition, by eating away and taking little steps, you know, like affordable housing. All those little things, we make ADUs so that you only need one water meter. And we allow, you know, if you have infrastructure like sewer on a smaller lot or, you know, and all those things help homelessness. They help workforce development and transportation equity. And so it's those little steps and that's progress together.
Okay, thank you very much.
As a council member, you will be in a position to champion certain issues. And which out of all the issues we face, will you champion?
I'll rephrase that as what are my priorities?
Well, the word champion is really important.
All right.
You're going to be out there. You're going to be a champion. You can be like, come on, everybody.
That's my thing.
That's my thing.
Okay, well, okay. You say tomatoes, I say tomatoes. So yeah, you know, I've been champion downtown for many years through my Hilo Bay Front Trails, working on the downtown multimodal project plan. I'm on the Business Improvement District Plan right now, which is going to be an ordinance. It'll come out in November. Hopefully it's one of Aaron Chung's last ordinances that'll be able to be put out there. And that'll empower business owners in downtown to collect fees on themselves and hire, you know, things like obvious things like additional security, you know, to cooperate with county police, additional cleaning to cooperate with, you know, DPW services. And so downtown is one of the things I'd like to champion. And that's a district two. One and three, maybe, you know, a lot of people come to downtown. It's really the heart and soul of the east side. So that's one issue I'll champion. Another issue is government transparency. Unless you work inside the county, and I feel like I'm fairly involved and pretty savvy, it's still really hard to navigate county resources. And I can't imagine if you didn't spend as much time as I do interacting with county, how difficult it would be. And I'd really like to increase our transparency to make, you know, and I'm on the cost of government commission and IT is a huge topic. And a lot of that surrounds how difficult it is to interact with the government, whether it's getting, you know, a permit or, you know, kind of famously the permit epic, but you know, renting a pavilion or you know, I hope in the future we can manage tourism through online portals. And so really upgrading our transparency and our IT services. And again, that's one of those little things, increasing our IT means that someone in Pohai doesn't have to drive to Hilo to take care of something, renew their registration or whatever it may be. And because a lot of these things are complex and so transparency in the government. Also, you're, you know, like when you get your property tax bill, I'd love to show on there, hey, this is how much is going to debt. Yeah, let me get my, in front of my camera. This is in front, you know, how much is going to police and fire and parks and rec? And you know, so people can have that kind of information is empowering, right? Because if you're like, holy cow, 14% of my property taxes is just going to debt. What's that debt for? And then we find out a little more. We're looking at ponds right now, you know, the public open space 2% fund. It's very difficult, like what do they buy? Where is it? What is it? How much do we have? What do we spend? It's, it's very difficult to figure these things out. So that's, that's something I'm going to champion. And lastly is infrastructure. You know, I used to famously joke, I'm going to open this real estate investment trust, right? Which is called a REIT. And it's got a billion dollars in assets. And the way we're going to save money is only have seven maintenance personnel. That's the county of Hawaii. All of our assets outside of roads. All of it, bathrooms, the county buildings, gyms, seven people. That's how many people maintain it. And it's why our infrastructure, we tend to spend a lot, we get a bond, we build it, it's fantastic. And then we don't do anything until it's in real need of repair. You know, the, the recent demolition of the Papa Aloha Gym is an example. And, and there's lots more. Central Fire Station is the poster child of it. I spent 10 years there, living there. And we have got to get, and this is part of that city manager, I mean, the county manager concept. We've got to take infrastructure out of political cycles and department heads cycles and into like an engineered driven maintenance cycle. So those are the three championships, two of which are island-wide. One is downtown and I could go on about affordable housing too, but we are we'll go.
I do have a couple of follow-up questions on that. So, you know, I'm glad you brought up infrastructure, but it's not only about maintenance. There's some things that need to be, you know, approved at the primary, you know, from the start. And it so and ties, ties in with your second, you know, priority, which is government transparency. But for me, government transparency goes way, way deeper. You know, it goes way deeper than, you know, like, I'll tell you, I've looked at the budget. I do the books for, I've done the books for a nonprofit. Several nonprofits in town throughout my career. And sometimes I feel like I get more questions from my board than we're allowed to give to the county. And then sometimes the answers are very nebulous. I'm worried the money's going. It's, it's not transparent at all on the details of line item budgets. And you know, so like, is there something that you could do to help increase that transparency where we don't, we shouldn't have to ask for all of these things. It should be, you know, readily available information. Do you support, you know, like for example, forensic audits of some departments? So we could see, it's not about shaming what's been done. It's about knowing how to move forward with the budget that we have because infrastructure is like critically important for us.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And, and yeah, we talked about the sewer earlier. That is like another colossal poster child that has not been attended to. And now we have this huge bill ahead of us. And, and that's not even like expanding services, you know, with the impending cesspool conversion, like on my street, everybody's on cesspool. And the sewer runs right down and around us and you could just go through our street and add 45 homes. But there's no budget for that. Right now it's just like, stop the bleeding. And so, yeah, the, and that's what I did, what I'm talking about. The IT is such an important part of government transparency. And being like, right now, if you go to the county website and put in EPIC, you've got to go a couple more steps and I, you got to go to a hyperlink on the building before it'll take you to the Electronic Processing Information Center or whatever Epic stands for. And you know, that's only because I've spent a lot of time chasing through that. But it's amazing that it's something so talked about. You can't even, you know, and I can't imagine, you know, you go into those metadata files for budget information. That's really difficult. So I don't know. Maybe audits are in a way, but then where's that information? How do you find an audit? I mean, you read about it in the Tribune and go, geez, and then what?
Well, that's what happens after the audit.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. So I think maybe, you know, audits are Yeah, exactly, exactly. So I think maybe, uh, you know, audits are important and they're a good way for an organization to stay on track if they drift, right? Um, you know, the fire department audit that happened last year, uh, it's all stuff that we've known and been trying to work on for ten years. You know, there was no smoking guns there. Um, it's just been a lack of funding and an inability to push those priorities forward.
But is it a lack of funding or is it a misprioritization?
I don't know, you know, I, I wasn't the chief and I wasn't on the council. So I do know as, you know, uh, as one of the ranking battalion chiefs and someone who was full of ideas and um, I was famous for sending spreadsheets up to, through the mayor, through the chain of command uh showing the cost benefit analysis and bothering finance for hard numbers and I don't know where it happened, whatever happened to it, again, don't know, but that's why we're talking today, cuz I would like to move up that food chain and make those differences and make that change.
Well, it's good to hear about, um, you know, transparency is an important thing, cuz I think transparency, like one of the things that um allows us to win these lives by asking a lot of questions. So I think, you know, for many of us, we'd like to see a lot of the, the questions that we have and a lot of questions that you have asked in public and in public forums and so that we can all hear the discussions on what's really important. So that gets brought to light, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's so important.
Jump in with some follow up questions. You talked about uh downtown improvement district and last I heard that uh concept presented. It was tied to um reinstating um public parking fees, public parking meters. Is that still the plan? Are you in favor of that?
No, uh, and that is the great thing about the Business Improvement District. I know early on under Harry Kim's administration, they started talking about this Business Improvement District. Kailua Kona has one, they've been used in Hawaii and for a long time in the mainland and a lot of places to uh help revitalize areas just like our downtown Hilo. And what I think is, a- and, and I went um handing out surveys. We, we handed out a survey to all, first we mailed them to all the property owners downtown, and then we went to all the businesses. And even um people who shop and work at these businesses to help get input, again, part of that transparency, get input and, and find out like, what are the needs downtown and um, the Business Improvement District is great because it'll basically put the control in the people who are directly impacted by it. Not me, not you, not you, not you, none of us own businesses downtown. But we want it to be better. They can have a little bit of their own self-directed destiny. Uh, Kailua Village did it and it's really helped out a ton. They're very happy with it. And I'm hoping that it can help clean up, um, you know, add to the cleaning, I think that's some of the obvious services that, you know, comes up. Cleaning and additional private security gets hired to assist and be additional eyes. You know, our poor HPD is stretched thin, they just don't have the resources to put footbeats downtown.
Just to jump in here and to be clear, the question I'm asking is about the funding mechanism for it. Not that just the overall concept. So again, you know, uh, there were people who came to the downtown improvement association meeting, one that I attended, and there was a presentation made. And in that presentation, they specifically talked about, yeah, putting uh parking meters back in, and then that would be the funding mechanism for the improvements that the uh downtown improvement district wanted to make. So the question is specifically about funding mechanisms. Do you know what the funding mechanism is? And if it were public parking meters going back up, would you be in favor of that?
So like I said right at the beginning of that question, no, I'm not in pri- pri- uh favor of that, I don't think that's a good thing, but the downtown, I don't, I am not a business owner or a landowner downtown. And that's for them to kind of help decide what's gonna drive them forward. The initial concept is for a additional uh like BID um assessment on top of their property taxes. And it's part of the law is that it's, uh, the way the law is crafted is that um Department of Finance collects that extra fee and then turns it over to the, what's will be a five oh one C three nonprofit, the Hilo Bid. If you go to the website, helobid.org, you can find out a lot more information, you can do a deep dive. So, you know, you may support paid parking and maybe in the future, that'll be a good idea. You know, as we develop more parking or build a multi-story parking, I, I don't know, we can't predict that. But what I like about it is it puts the people who are impacted by this and have the most to gain and lose, they can self-impose fees on themselves. Not outside decisions or large scale, you know, they'll, they'll be able to drive their future and the county's there to support them. And uh, you know, I see the county's role is implementing like the multimodal plan to impact, you know, street lighting, more seating, additional covered walkways, uh slower traffic, better pedestrian bike access. So I hope that.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying.
So would you be for the, um, for the businesses to fund the, the development as opposed to the citizens?
Yeah, and that's really it. It's, it's them, they, you know, if we were all business owners downtown, we would pay, we're saying, hey, you guys, do you wanna pay a buck? A square foot or a buck per thousand more, a buck fifty, here's what we can do with a buck fifty per thousand dollar va- valuation. We can get twenty-four hour security. If we only do a dollar, we can do, you know, twelve hours security and additional cleaning cycle once a day, or you know what I mean? So they'll be able to drive that and the net result is if they'll be in charge of the, their vibrancy downtown, they know their, their situation best. And um, the county can support them and uh I think the net outcome will be a better place to live, work and shop.
I know.
All right, Mathias, uh, please share your understanding of the public trust doctrine.
Well, I have not read that doctrine. I'm not a poly sci major, my background uh is in business and um, but I am going to go out on a limb here and say that that's part of our transparency and being um upfront to voters. You know, um understanding and being empathetic and taking in divergent viewpoints, um, all to shape decisions as you go forward, uh even if they're contrary to maybe your own uh biases or whatever, right? So um, again, I apologize, I'm not a poly sci major and so I've never dove deep into that. I'm a first time candidate and I am, got my heart on my sleeve and uh moving forward and trying to serve uh the best I can, as I described earlier. Tell me about it.
Well, give me a momentary pass on that, so I can ask you a follow up question, once you know what it is. So it's essentially, it is um uh, the right of the people to have our waters protected. So I think, believe the court held uh that the essential feature of the public trust is the right of the people to have the water protected for their use. And then, of course, there's standards by which the state uh would manage, right? On the distribution allocation of all surface and groundwaterers. So now that you know, you know, somewhat what it is about, why would you say it's so important? And how could you apply it to the decisions that you'll make as a council person?
Well, uh, okay, so now you familiarize it with all the um action that's mainly been happening on Maui with the public trust and the, the court case that happened, I think was last year, where it talked about uh waters, groundwaters, all being part of the public trust. And I apologize for not catching on.
We'll send you the links tonight.
Yeah, it's not just about water, it's about all kinds of resources. Is that government holds in trust for the people?
Yeah, it's, it's basically a shared uh common value or trust, you know, whether it's lands or waters or the ocean or I guess you could even probably extend it to our climate.
It's about ecological balance, basically.
Yeah, and, and um, so anything that's in the public trust, you know, whether it's water or ocean, you know, I really think we don't have to look too far back, eh, for examples of where that's been broken. And um I, I, I support retaining public trust, lands or water or resources, whatever they may be, future you know, items to serve the people. Um, and um, I can imagine, you know, there's gonna be sticky issues around that in a legal sense eh eh with certain things, like I don't know um how do geothermal would fall into that, right? Because that, you could argue, heat is a public trust and resource and it is indeed going out to everybody who uses uh power through a publicly traded PUC governed company, but you know, I could see how that could get sticky in there fast. But generally speaking, as a blanket, I support, not personally, I'm not a big supporter of selling off public lands. I know that that comes up a lot on Oahu about making affordable housing and selling. That seems short sighted to me. I mean, I understand, we're in a desperate situation. But uh, I don't see that as a long-term solution that's a good one.
Um, environmentalists are raising concerns regarding the impacts of proposed large-scale commercial projects like the Ho'oua Olapower Plant, also known to some as Huho'ua. Um, and the Hawaiian Kingdom Brands Coffee Project. Um, and the impacts that they're gonna have on Hawaii Island aquifers. Are you aware of how these projects will impact our freshwater resources?
Huho'ua, I am, uh, Hawaiian Kings brand, is that the big giant mega coffee farm that's down Captain Cook's side?
Uh, I don't think so. I think it's a company that's proposing to set up shop on the Hilo side.
Oh, this is the new water company?
Well, um, so now they're looking at coffee products, which will consume water, a lot of water to make, but um, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I am familiar with the company that is trying to do the exact same thing that the Windward Planning Commission shut down prior, but they have like a better community benefit package. Uh, I, I really, I can't speculate on that. That's been in the paper one day. Um I would, I would venture to say, I mean, unless there's some kind of amazing new evidence or it's something that was not uh thought of before, the Windward Planning Commission, you know, did not approve that, uh, the company before who had a similar operation. And again, we talked about the public trust, um, we're tapping into a, a, a public aquifer and so you have to be very careful about that and I really, without knowing more, I, I'm just, you know, talking off the top of my head. I'm not privy to that information. But yeah, uh, again, that, like what you said, the, now I'm gonna be a Mr. Public Trust guy. But yeah, anytime you use a public resource like that or clearly a private venture, it's gotta have some pretty high bars, it's gotta pass before that moves forward.
Thank you.
And then, oh, go ahead, and then the Huho'ua one, yeah, that's a lot of, twenty-three million gallons a day pulled out for cooling. Again, the county doesn't have really much jurisdiction other than the building permits over that. The Supreme Court, the PUC, all kinds of people have uh weighed in on that. There is even the ruh-rah with uh legislatures trying to make a special deal that uh David E. gave veto or did not sign vetoed. Um, I forget the, the bill number. Again, we don't have a say on that and, you know, um, I hope maybe something productive can come of those sixteen thousand acres of eucalyptus. I've always hoped maybe that, you know, when Kamehameha schools put those plants in in the late eighties, they talked about bringing uh veneer mills to the Hamakua coast to replace sugar. And veneer mills is where you make plywood. And um plywood, uh I don't know how that would go with a non Doug Ford, no, you know, all the, the engineering of it. But there is a product called OSB oriented strand board and it's a very popular product. LP Smart Side is used on virtually every new home you see. And maybe some kind of product could be made out of that uh facility and used uh, you know, that wood for that sixteen thousand acres. I mean, I don't know what else. That's a real conundrum.
But could you clarify your position on burning biomass for energy?
Uh, like I said, yeah, I think it's dead. You know, the PUC has weighed in on it and said it's not uh, doesn't meet that threshold as a renewable. Um, I know that they, suppo- what I've read, and again, you know, I'm like you guys, I read the paper, I read Civil Beat, Star Bulletin, you know, I am not on the inside of the PUC or negotiating with any of those teams, so I don't have any um deep state matter to share with you guys, but uh, it seems like that's a pretty uphill battle and whether we're importing wood pellets in ten years or oil, uh, I don't know, it doesn't, so it seems like it's dead and, and uh, I could only hope that we could, like I said, could find a positive outcome for that big facility and all this eucalyptus we have on our islands. You know, that's something that could be a, a positive co- outcome of it, but I think right now that thing is dead.
Any more follow up questions on that one?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, okay, switching the subject a little bit. Council policy regarding hearings as well as board and commission meetings is reverting to its pre-pandemic protocols requiring in-person attendance to support this.
So boards, so you said, again, uh, boards and commissions and council meetings are gonna be in person to prevent that. You know, um, that's interesting you bring that up, we just talked about this, um uh Shannon Matson and I are studying the uh Ponce Committee and um looking at, at at how that commission operates. And that was one of the things, you know, like, look at us, I don't know where you guys are. Kristin is, are probably here in Hilo, but
Yeah.
I'm not sure. And um, you know, it's very convenient to have uh Zoom meetings, and I think there should be an ongoing flexibility. I, you know, I'm never a big fan of win and lose. I, I love uh using smart decisions and moving forward and applying, you know, uh efficient and effective government. And Zoom meetings really are a great way for people to attend council meetings from their homes, um, commissions that uh like Ponce, where you have a person from every district, even our, our uh cost of government commission that I'm on. There, there's one person from every district and it's great. We do everything online and we have, you know, robust debate and discussions and um, so I, I'm a supporter of that and I hope that they don't make it either or.
Okay.
The answer that for you?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, are you familiar with measures currently in place to prevent fraud and waste with regards to the awarding and fulfillment of county contracts? It sounds like you uh do a bit of investigation and research into how county business proceeds. So um, you know, help us understand your awareness of that. And then also share ideas you have for what could be done to prevent such abuses.
So that sounds like a pretty technical deep dive. So that sounds like a pretty technical deep dive. I don't know if you've ever looked into procurement law. But it is like the Yellow Pages to New York City in nineteen eighty five. I mean, that is a deep dive. Um, and I am not familiar with all of the regulations around procurement. I do know from a satellite view and in my role in writing grants and seeing how um bids. Are 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 written out and uh awarded. That um, the goal is for uh the best use of taxpayers' money. And um. You know, most efficient, and then they also have a bunch of other criteria, right? Like if you're a woman owned company or a minority owned company or a vet owned company or um. Handicap, I mean, there's, there's, there's a tons of criteria in procurement and awarding of contracts. So uh, and the the goal is to even out those dollars. And what we were talking about earlier in our, you know, breaking down those silos between federal, state and county. Those monies are very prescriptive how they are spent. And so um. And that is driven mostly by federal and state law. The county doesn't have a whole lot of play in procure. Procurement rules. As I understand it. And uh, but the goal should always be to have the good effective use of uh. Public dollars in private sector contractor hands. I will say, you know. On that note, you know, I think there's sometimes a false economy. When we do long term. Contracts with private companies, you know, uh, out in West Hawaii. We have Puanaulu landfill that is run by waste management, but staffed by county workers. And we have to pay waste management, all four of us here, taxpayers, we pay waste management. To run that landfill because we somehow wrote like a never ending. Contract. So that's something that I feel like we really need to look at. Sorry, I'm going too long.
All right, that's uh all we have time for today. Uh, thank you, Matthias, for joining us. And thank you also Christine and Tanya for conducting the interviews. The most important thing you can do uh for our listeners out there is to get out there and vote. So please, uh, we admonish you all to vote, ask your friends and family to vote as well.
Yes.
At Huli Pack, we're building something that the Hawaii political establishment has never seen, a slate of pono leaders. For more information, visit Huli Pack. At H U L I H I dot com, hulihi.com. Thank you very much, everybody, for joining us and uh stay tuned for our next interview. Thank you.